I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the pledge of the flag, please. Welcome. Look at this huge crowd here tonight. I just wanted to make everyone aware, anytime that we have a full house, it's very easy for that camera back there to pick up any of the background noises. So to make it, please try to be as cordial as possible so we don't pick up that background noise when you're viewing it on YouTube. Well, thank you for coming to the May 3 meeting. I'm sorry, I'm thinking, I'm thinking, I'm thinking, uh, I'm thinking it's spring, February 3rd. Very good. Okay. Financial reports and payment of the bills. Do we have a motion to do with? See, look, I'm really, I'm really bad tonight. Let me, let me start over and take a couple breathers here. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes of January 20th? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills. Do we have a motion to approve the financial report?
So do.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Um, just need some clarification on grant money. I called and talked to Steve today. And Tina Jones, Good Hope, and Suzie Quilts, it is all paid with facade money? I was wondering why is it coming through the town when it's normally paid out through the Alliance?
Gene and I did a joint grant through Community Legacy. So the Alliance did part of it for facade. Gene did the other part for the parking lot that we're redoing. And all the money was from one pod for the Town of Elton. So it's just a pass through money. So the town has received the check from the state and then they'll pass it to the facade recipients.
That's all I have. Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. First up, we have Relay for Life presentation from Ann Marie Denver. Would you like to take the, take the floor and tell us what we're doing?
All right. This, Cecil County's Relay for Life last year was in the top 20 for our area, which is from Newcastle down to Virginia. So we were very proud that we were able to get in that range. This year is our 20th year of having the Relay for Life at Elton Senior High School this year. And we're hoping to get a larger crowd, more participation. The Town of Elton already has their team formed. We're looking for survivors and anybody else that wants to participate. I have information if anybody wants it, so they can contact me or Cheyenne from the Town has information. It's May the 20th, 2016, at Elton High School, and it's 20 years, and we want to paint the county purple.
Thank you.
I also have one for the American Legion.
I'd like to invite up Mr. Bill Young, if you'd come up and, and Mr. Norman, I think you had your camera, did you want to? Come on, we gotta get a good photograph of this, of this presentation. Go ahead.
This is for the American Legion for their support of Relay for Life for last year. So we hope you'll support us again this year. Thank you.
The American Legion was our, I think our largest donor for the, for the Town of Elton. We really appreciate that. Thank you so much. And our huge flag, thank you. Okay. We have, make sure I don't miss anything. Uh, we have a recognition for Department of Public Works. Dan, do you have a few things you'd like to say? Or do you want me to say them? I'm happy to.
You say it.
All right. Very good. I'm happy, happy to talk about it. Uh, we had a, of course, a record so far from the storm, snowstorm gymnast. And just to mention this by the numbers a little bit, the Public Works Department had 12 number, number of hour, 12 number of hour shifts, which were 12 on and 12 off. They had 15 hours for driving ban. Now, that was the ban that the county put on where we couldn't drive through Saturday night through Sunday morning, only in Cecil County for the emergency, only for emergency vehicles. But we were able to do the best that we can during that period of time. We also had the official number based on Cecil Lake, Jake Owens, it seems a little low, but the official number was 15 inches of snow. Due to the snowdrifts and so forth, we had over 36 inches in some areas. We had 76 continuous hours of snow removal by our Public Works Department. We estimated over 90 loads of hauled snow of five-ton trucks that we hauled off, over 90 truckloads.
That's just the parking lot.
One parking lot.
Just your parking lot and a truck.
Of course, doing this, we had over 294 years of experience from our Public Works Department that was doing all this. We placed over 350 tons of salt out during, onto the, onto the roads during the storm. We had over 1,200-plus man-hours involved during this snowstorm. And as Dan said, most importantly, number of restaurants, we had Roma's Pizza, which really supported us during this, and they were forced to close down only during the driving ban. But they stayed open for us so that we could have a place to headquarter, I guess, the public works guys. But I think in general, normally during a storm like this, it's very difficult to move the amount of snow that we moved. And I have to say, I take our hats off to the Public Works Department for a job well done. And we'd like to recognize them for that great job. And Dan, do you have something else that you'd like to add?
I've got three representatives from my, um, five TPW staff, like to bring them up. Can you be the mayor?
Yep.
Okay. First one, I've got Matt Simpson. Matt Simpson's been with us for over seven years. He's in charge of the concrete, the street crew. I've got Brian McQueen. He's also, he's been with us for about three years. He's in charge of purchasing, grass cutting, and he does a very good job. The other guy's new to the team, Craig Koshnow, he's new hire to the town. He's one of our new mechanics. He has over 20 years' experience as a mechanic, so. There are two sets of numbers I'd like to bring up in addition to what the mayor said. The first one is three, which is the number of ambulance calls we got on Saturday mornings to bring out so we can get the ambulance where it needs to be. So we actually, he called us and we got him out there. And finally, this is where, this is where the community all did pretty well. During the snow removal on Sunday, one of our trucks, I don't know who you're driving, Brian, I can't remember, got stuck in a deep snowbank going past the Stone Drive. Fortunately, a lot of residents who were out there also were stuck and they came out and they helped us actually dig out the truck itself. So this is a great example of how all the community gets together, we communicate occasionally when we get stuck, we help each other out. So we work hard, my guys, you did a really good job, so thank you, boys. I'm Lewis tonight, so.
All right. Thank you, guys. It was a job well done. I think, I got, I received a close to 10 emails, when I say the emails are complaints, and six of them were within the county. The other four were related to just not being able to get into two areas. One was Button Woods, and the other was Hollinsworth Manor. It's just too much snow to be able to get through those narrow roads. But we're working on a solution for that for next time we have this storm. Very good. All right. Resolution R3-2016. Steve, are you gonna read any of this or? Okay. I don't have it here in front of me, but the resolution R3-2016, we've been talking about this for a couple of meetings, okay? There's a lot of warehouses on here, so if everyone wants to bear with me, it's a very long resolution. But I'll, I'll just kind of read the first part. It's a resolution of the Mayor and Commissioners of the Town of Elton, supporting the application to the Secretary, Department of Commerce, for the redesignation of the Arts and Entertainment District in the Town of Elton, and authorizing certain incentives affecting qualified resident artists and owners of the qualified real property within the district. Whereas the district is intended to stimulate the local economy, enhance the revitalization of town, provide a venue for arts and related activities, provide both the residents and visitors to the town an attractive, supportive environment for the arts, and supplement current and future educational and recreational programs in the Elton community. And whereas in order for certain benefits and incentives to be offered to qualifying residing artists and property owners in the district, the Secretary must approve the district's redesignation in the Elton community. And whereas in 2006, the Elton Chamber of Commerce and the Elton Alliance applied for and received a 10-year designation of the district in the town from the Secretary. And whereas the Elton Chamber of Commerce and Elton Alliance prepared an application to the Secretary for the redesignation of the district for another 10-year term, the boundaries of which are defined on the map attached in this resolution. And whereas, the continued designation of the district provides benefits and incentives for qualifying residents, artists, and real property owners within the district, including an income tax subtraction modification for qualifying residing artists, a real property tax credit applicable to increase in assessment resulting from the construction and renovation of a manufacturing, commercial, or industrial building used by a qualifying residing artist, and is an exemption from the admission and amusement tax on the grocery receipts resulting from any admissions or amusement charged by any arts and entertainment enterprise qualifying residing artists for qualified activities in our districts. So along with this, of course, there's a map and there's a few other items. But do we have a motion to move forward and accept resolution R3-2016? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion on the resolution? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. The next item, I think, on the agenda, the Republican Club of Cecil County has requested a waiver for alcohol provision, uh, wait, wait a second here, I think, I think that's the wrong word on this. A waiver for alcohol. They're having a chili cook-off in the Elton Municipal Building in the community room on February 6th. Do we have a motion to approve the alcohol waiver? We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the alcohol waiver for the Republican Club Chili Cook-Off?
Yes. Thank you. I, I talked to the Director of Parks and Rec and also Lewis, and my understanding is that there was no political affiliation with the town, that we would not rent out any of the space to any political affiliation of the town. And they both had told me, Director of Parks and Rec had told me that that had changed. I don't know when that's changed. I'd like to see the policy of when that's changed. I'm not a Democrat, I'm not a Republican, I'm not, I'm an independent, so I have no, no vested interest in any of this. My thing is that once we rent it out to somebody like that, that's not a community event, is what I was told it was supposed to be, that opens the door, opens floodgates for a lot of other situations. I'm okay with moving forward as far as this particular time, but I'd like to have something hard set. And I believe that there is something already hard set as far as past policies and procedures as far as that room is designated for and were allowed to be used for community events, but not party affiliations. Am I wrong on that?
Today I looked through the, our policies, and I was trying to find one that specifically said community events only. I didn't find a policy. That doesn't mean that it doesn't exist.
Sure.
I just didn't happen to get my hands on it today.
Okay.
No, I, I agree with you. I think that there needs to be something hard to ask. Now, I'm, I think the, when I looked at this, as far as a Republican Club or a Democratic Club or a women's club or a, the red hat ladies' club and there's another venue, I think that there's a little difference. I think, of course, we certainly know it's very political being a Republican Club or a Democratic Club. I'm not trying to say one way or the other, but I think there, I think where I'd like to almost set the difference would be, is if I was to run for mayor again, I don't think that I should be able to use that venue up there to solicit for myself. And I think the same thing would go for if XYZ candidate in the county wanted to use that for a political fund. Yeah. I think that that would be the, kind of, the difference. I would, that would be my feelings anyhow, but we should talk about that at a workshop as we move forward, if anyone agrees with that idea.
Yeah. I think we should discuss that. It does open up.
It does.
The exposure. And then also on top of that, I understand that she's renting, renting it out, and that we need to talk about that as far as the revenue compared to, again, the private sector. All right?
Sure.
We put that on, do we have room one next, the next workshop?
Yeah, I put it on the next agenda.
Awesome. Thank you.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Town administrators, reporters, is there anything tonight, Steve? I guess I should have mentioned that Lou George finally took a vacation week, and he's in lovely Florida with his wife this, this week. Anything on the administrators? Very good. We'll continue on with mine. Now, we had a little bit of discussion and it came up, we're working on a Town of Elton Community Guide. And one of the things that we talked about back and forth was whether we should move the fireworks permanently from July 4th to September or, I guess the question I have, one, do we want to continue to move forward having fireworks? Two, do we want to consider moving them from July to September or just leaving them in July? So I guess we, we need to kind of discuss where we want to go here.
I guess another consideration too is the fact that 4th of July, you know, there is expectation, so how do you fill that void? That's a question that's fallen in line with that as well.
It's, it's a very good void. I know that we had, this past year, we had all the flooding down to Park, and we moved the fireworks to September. And I know that we got a lot of citizen outcry that we moved the fireworks from July to September. You know, fireworks are normally known for celebrating an important part of our history, and the only combat that I have back to that is in September, that week that we were looking at, was the week that Francis Scott Key actually wrote, wrote the Star-Spangled Banner. So what more, what better time to have fireworks than the week of the Star-Spangled Banner, per se? But I just, we just need to know what direction the board wants to go. I'm, uh, I've heard a lot of positive things about it being in September. I know that when we have it on the 4th of July, I'm just giving some goods and bads here, I know that our employees can pay double time anyhow during that time, but on the 4th of July, I think it's actually almost like a triple time because it's a holiday thing that's involved in that. So from a cost perspective, it is, definitely costs us more around the 4th of July than it would in September. And the initial comments back from the fireworks extravaganza folks would be that the, for the same amount of money that we would spend, the, the feature in September would be far greater because the fireworks aren't the demand as great, and we could have a longer show in September with higher fireworks. But I just need to know, 'cause I want to get this brochure done. Yeah?
I'm all for July 4th. I, it's a national holiday, it's a, it's an American tradition. I, there's so much to celebrate that day, especially being in government now myself. I mean, it's one thing that we raised up against the tyranny of overtaxing and what are independence? And the ability to have, have votes and have representatives of the people and stuff. And it, for me, it was a little deeper, just with my background, my family background of all of us being military, I, I am all for July 4th. I did vote last year to move it because of the rain and, and I'm okay with, the alternate date would be right there at the Fall Fest. I'm perfectly fine with that, but I think the, the first go at it should be July 4th and nothing less. And I'm, and everybody up here knows I'm, I'm a penny pincher. Everybody out there should know I'm a penny pincher. I'll make eight scream on that penny. But there, there are certain things that I can't pass on.
Very good. Charlie?
I guess the celebration is synonymous to the 4th of July celebration in itself. And, you know, I compare with what DJ has said is a tradition, not only in America, but certainly it has served to be a tradition here in the Town of Elton, and also as an expectation that, you know, we showcase exactly what we do.
Very good. Charlie?
Well, as they usually say, I'm not always politically correct, but anyway, I'm one for 4th of July, but the thing is, I would like to get a poll from the citizens to try to see what their direction, that they would want the board to go as far as if we would like to move it. I heard from one of the citizens before, we didn't have it on 4th of July, that we should then have it on the next Independence Day, which was Memorial Day, I think it was. For me, 4th of July is a good time, even though the 20, 25 minutes of display that we have, I think it's enough, not taking it to now or whatever, you know, more for the buck, you talked about it. But that's a prime time that everyone tries to get in their town, is the 4th of July. I would like to keep it that way, but I would also ask for a poll from the citizens in the town.
Mary Jo?
Um, I, you know, I recall years ago, and I've said this before, a former mayor said this was a gift back to the tax-paying citizens. There are a lot of people that depend on our 4th of July, they plan their day with 4th of July, their picnics and whatever. So I do like it on the 4th of July. I, everyone knows, I've been involved with Fall Fest for 19 years, so if the board chose to do that, I would support that as well. But the board's waiting to 4th of July, and so I would do the same.
Very good. 4th of July is what it is. What it, and the, and the citizens' book is the 4th of July. Very good. The second letter that I had, I'd asked the board, I think two weeks ago, I sent everyone a, a copy of the informational guide or the residence guide that we wanted to print. And in this guide, we have added a lot of different information about the town. We have a, I want, I'm ready to move forward with this. We received, we sent it out for four different companies to get us a quote back on this, and three of them responded back over the last couple of weeks. And the, the low price, it reached anywhere from $4,525 up to $7,567. And Chesapeake Publishing was the load person at $4,525. That doesn't include postage, which will be another $1,500 here, here or there on postage. But I would like to move forward with this. And I, hopefully everyone has taken a look at it and they made the changes that they need it. Stop by tomorrow if, if everyone can, and take a look for some final looks at this or the next couple of days. We have a deadline of Friday that we'd like to get this out because there's parts in here for the Parks and Rec Department. The Parks and Rec Department was moving forward with their brochure for their summer or their spring programs. So we wanted to combine both of these so the costs of that would be done all at one time. And the funding, I would take the funding out of this partially from Parks and Rec, but they were gonna spend anyhow, but also we would take it out of the economic development money. I think this is a tool that our residents are gonna love once they get their hands on it. So please take a look at it. We're ready to go to town with this thing, and I think it looks great. I spent a couple hours here today reviewing it.
I, I reviewed it also. I did, Chaney did a great job. Cody helped. Thank you. You too, Cody.
Where does the, can we get a copy of the photograph? Just email it?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Sunday, we attended the police recognition awards banquet upstairs. Gene, I think it was one of those things I'd, I'd almost liked to videotaped the event so that the, the Town of Elton citizens could see and hear some of the comments that were made about the, the police department during that venue. I think the one thing that really hit home with me was Detective Tour, who was, received the high award for the, for the police department. You know, we went through a time last year where we had two young men that were murdered, and their bodies were missing for quite a bit, a long period of time. And I'll probably mess this up too when I say this. Correct me if I'm, if I'm saying this correctly or not. There's been, the, the bottom line of this is, is Detective Tour was able to get this man to admit to these murders. And it's the first time in the history of the state of Maryland that we have got a conviction on an individual for a double, no body murder. There was no bodies. This man, we were able to get him to say, yes, I did it, and there was no bodies. And it's the first time ever in the state of Maryland. So that's the type of police detectives and officers that we have here that can make those things work. And of course, during that time, the only reason we were able to find those bodies was because of the investigation work by Detective Tour and during the agreement. So it's, there was a good chance that that would have went to court. There's a very good chance, who knows what would have happened, but there was no bodies to put a murder conviction onto a person. So it was, it was something that we, he needs to be very proud of. The last thing I had was on Saturday, and I, I see Ed Ginder back there. Ed's on our planning commission board, and Ed's been involved with the University of Delaware Chain Gang for 41 years, and we were very fortunate, and I, I'm with that chain gang also. Well, actually, many years, but active again after Ed fired me. Of course, I'm back on the committee again. But Ed was able to get Bona Moore Ravens tight end Nick Boyle, number 82, to come into town last week. And Nick Boyle was, we escorted him around our community, and he wanted to be part of helping to raise funds in our community. We took him to the Special Olympics venue at Pine Grove, and I heard a comment, someone said how crazy and busy Pine Grove was. What we were able to raise, he was able to help raise over $12,000 for Special Olympics on Saturday, which was wonderful. We left that venue, and then we went to a cystic fibrosis dinner at Patriots Glen, and they had a record raising amount of money, which I know was over $5,000. I think $6,500 is what they raised, and that was their biggest amount of money that they've ever raised also. So it was very nice that we had a kind of a celebrity come into the town and, and help along with that. Hopefully that's, there'll be more of that to come in the future, but that was a great day, I thought, for our community to, to show that we were helping to raise money for some great causes. That is all I have, and Mary Jo, you were on.
Okay. You took the words out of my mouth regarding the police awards Sunday. Very, very impressed.
Oh, I did have one more thing. Can I have two more things? There's something wrong with me tonight. I've got other things on my mind. I was asked, and I wanted to ask the board here, tomorrow night at the Elton High School, would like the Mayor and Commissioners to be part of the high school basketball program. And I see Officer Angelo Joppies back there, and thank you. I see Officer Angelo Joppies back there. Thank you. And he is asking if the board would like to participate in announcing the game. The JV game starts at five thirty, and the varsity game starts at seven. And anyone from the board that would have some interest in being part of that. I'm in. I'm in for tomorrow night.
From refereeing.
You're going to referee? If anyone else from the board would like to be the guest comp, announcer with me, we'll be there. So.
I'll activate the ears of the game.
It's a game against, let's see.
Edgewood.
It's a basketball game against Edgewood. Five thirty game and the seven o'clock game. You'll be there. Very good. Well, if you can stop by afterwards, pop for dinner. And the last thing that I had, and I promise you it's the last thing I had. I wanted to mention that the Main Street Now Conference is going to be May twenty-third through May twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen. Now, I think that we have an election coming up, so I think it's the, I think it's the, during the, I think the election is May twenty-fourth. But if any of the board would like to attend this, what we, we were recognized last year as one of the top Main Streets in the country. And I think that this is a conference that if any of the board members wants to attend, please let, let us know if you want to attend, and we'll see how we can fund it. It's in Wisconsin this year, and I think it's very important for us to be part of if we can. I don't have anything else.
Okay. Back to the police awards. I was really impressed with the statistics of the officers and the awards that they received. I wish we could open this up to the public somehow to be, or just get it out there, the number of arrests and all the information that we heard Sunday was incredible. And my husband, you know, he doesn't hear everything that goes on like we do here, but he walked out of there and said, I am really impressed with your police department. And, but it was very well done, and I can't say enough about it. It really was.
They do a great job. And we are going to put some of that out on the, on the Facebook page.
Wonderful. Good, good. And Dan and crew, I think after that last storm, the downtown streets were the best I've ever seen them. There was parking spaces everywhere. The way you just closed the spot, got into it, worked out perfectly. So thank you to all of you. And I know how hard you work. And I do want to mention someone in the audience because they're here. Our two thousand fifteen, half of them are here, Citizen of the Year is Dwight and Diane Hare. And Dwight's out here tonight.
Diane's here.
Oh, there's Diane. Oh, there's Diane. So their awards ceremony will be upstairs on March thirty-first. And just let us know if you'd like to attend. And invitations are filling out the end of this week. So we're very, very pleased that they were chosen by the past recipients of this award. And that's it.
All right. Commissioner Gibbons?
I do want to.
I'm going again.
I do want to say I really enjoyed the event they had for the police department. I do commend them for the work that they're doing in the town of Elton, in through the county, really. I'm going to speak a little bit on the park and recreation update. Park and Recreation for February two thousand sixteen, a high school basketball league. We had two nights per week with twenty-five participants. That's a little low from years before. No, not.
This is the first year with that.
First year. For the, okay. The high school basketball league. Okay. I didn't read that part. So that is, that's good, twenty-five, because you've got yourself at least four teams, at least. Good. Preschool sports clinic, soccer, T-ball, and basketball. Saturday mornings at Jump Manor Elementary, the school gymnasium, there's thirty-six participants. Art in Motion preschool class, Monday, seven participants. And All About Sports preschool class on Thursdays, fourteen participants. Coming up Saturday, weekend classes, talking, I'm taking reservations until Friday, February the fifth, two thousand sixteen. All About Sports Weekend Class, there's nineteen overall enrolled right now, right? I'm looking at you because I know where the information came. All About Art Weekend Classes, eight enrolled. And Hands On All Weekend Class, six enrolled. Valentine Crap Class, and also Valentine Parents Night Out. Spring and Summer Registration will begin in March, and all activities brochures will be printed in the town resident guide. While I'm talking about this, I just done a basketball game yesterday for the Cecil County Parks and Rec. Just wanted to throw this in. One night Tuesday was yesterday, we traveled to Rising Sun. Forty-one players, one coach, one instructor, and six teams. We played against Rising Sun with eighty kids. And in two hours, we got over six games played. I thought that was very important to announce here in the town of Elton because there's a lot of supporters here looking to, to recognize and wanting to move forward to this recreation center. I'm saying that because as Parks and Rec, if there's a facility, there could be activity. And if there's activity, you'll find not just the youth, but you'll find some adults there participating. The parents came and enjoyed themselves. So all of, two hours, we had over close to two hundred people in the gym involved with a program that if the town of Elton has a place, we can host our own stuff. So I wanted to bring that up. And while I'm online, my, my little kids here, there was a couple of questions asked. They read an article in the Cecil Week or whatever paper they read. And I don't care what people write, whatever. I just know what I believe and I feel confident in. The question was, is it possible, we're looking to fund the building if we don't have any resources, whatever, is it possible to take out a loan from a general fund, that's a question from the citizens, and pay ourselves back, setting up almost like a payback program for yourself? And through the activities and the funding that is coming in through the park recreation, pay back the loan that way? And I said, I'll ask. And they said also, it'd be poss, it'd be great if each, again, these are comments from citizens, it'd be great if each town had their own park and rec building, and then we had someplace for the kids to go. I thought that was a powerful comment in the statement that they made, not saying that, I'm telling everybody what to do with their funds, how to buy a building, whatever. But the town of Elton is in dire need. And then our Parks and Recreation, one of the comments I made to the people were, Parks and Recreation is not an business to make profit off of just running programs. It's to provide a service for the taxpayers and the citizens in the community. And the bottom line is, it's not the way some people read the article. It's not to try to make profit and to break even. It's to provide a service that has never been provided in the town of Elton since my time. So that's my report.
Thank you. Mr. Gibbons?
I'd like to thank the Department of Public Work for the effort that they made. It was a superlative effort in removing the snow, both in the community as well as downtown. Also, I'd like to mention that Mark Dazavale also settled some snow and used it back home in areas that was normally a town responsibility, particularly from Booth Street down to Lopez, and also at the end of Booth Street to High Street. We took some snow that, again, Daniel Minman normally removes. So we can appreciate him for that. Police Recognition, again, chief, I'd like to commend you for your effort. And I thought it was a good idea to have it on Sunday. That allowed the family of the parents, I mean, the families of the officers to come out and really participate in that activity. You had a full house, as opposed before, when you only had a few, when you had it on different nights. So you'd be commended for that. Thank you. I was at Elton High School today to inform them that this year, the town will be providing two scholarships. And they're getting their paperwork together because this is the time of the year when students start to go in and ask about scholarships. Also, we are a member of the Hartford Cecil League. And basically, that Elton O. the Third are two scholarships. Before, we only got responsive act on the schools in Northeast and Hurryville. But each county school is supposed to be a major word of that. So tomorrow, I'm going to send something to Bohemia Manor and Hurryville. And also, I was up there trying to schedule another visit that we still previous to explain to the students about local government. We were there last year. We did a very good job. And again, we're going to return and do the same thing again. And that's my report.
Girl, you had one other thing?
Yes, well, the game that would be announced would be for the girls, not the young men's basketball team. Okay. I just wanted to comment on that high school basketball league, the two nights. Those are some of the kids who did not make the high school basketball. It's correct. Somebody may remember, I know Gibbons will remember, years ago, started a basketball program called High School Hoops. That's for the kids who did not make the high school basketball. And normally, if you don't make your first year, second year, you never get a chance to play again. That's going to be a bigger and better program for you next year because parents came and asked me, is there something to do for the kids? And being honest with you, I didn't know this program.
Actually, I haven't stopped the registration.
Because no, I have no place, no place.
We have this base for them.
And so I will tell you, there was eighty-six kids that were in that program. And one kid I can speak of is Chris Francis Francisco. If there, anybody wants to follow this up to see if this is a true story. Chris Francis Francisco did not make the team his first year, second year, played in this league, and in the fourth year, he was Player of the Year. So that's a big program if you get it done right. Okay.
Y'all remember that league, but you had your name on the back of the shirt.
Shh. I didn't want to say it. It's about the league. There's nothing to say. True story. It was about the league. It's a program that will work.
Good evening, everybody. I have just a couple of things. Steve, I need your help on two things. The Mayor Fasano's budget, to my knowledge, it hasn't been finalized yet. Is that right?
That's correct. They're supposed to come out May as five. They couldn't make it due to the model one. They want work to do.
So when's the next, the date?
I need a date from now.
Could you let the board know please?
It sure will.
I'm anxiously been waiting for that for six months. Thank you. Also, the water study is not going to be complete yet, to my knowledge. Is that right?
That's correct.
What are we waiting on there?
We've put that on hold. We have some mutations needed with Municipal Marine Services Group that staffing unfortunately doesn't allow us to do right now.
All right. Thank you. The last thing I want to talk about, I do want to comment on the rec center because I know it's, it's the small elephant in the room. And I believe all of us, to include myself, I want to set the record straight. I think all of us believe that there should be a place for young adults to go in a safe environment. I'm not opposed to that at all. My, my problem with the entire situation, and I saw an email today about KCI, getting ready to spend taxpayers' money on extending Satscreed, I think it was. And again, it comes back to how much money is the town going to spend on this? And, and the legacy cost of that with the situation right now with Parks and Rec. And I'm not bearing any blame anywhere. I'm stating facts. And whether I'm the bearer of the news, and you like me or not, it's immaterial. One plus one is two. It can't be anything but. Right now, we're, we're at, we're running out of deficit. We had to borrow one point something million dollars, one point seven, from the savings account to cover normal bills. And actually, I'm going to, I'm going to go into another situation shortly. Right now, our general account is showing two million, right? But I think that's actually wrong. I think it should be higher than that.
You're saying our general account or what?
General funds shows two million dollars. The rainy day fund.
No, there's nothing here that would show the rainy day fund in any report that we have. Zach Braxton?
General fund shows two point oh.
At the end of fourteen, we don't have, this year fifteen budget. I'm sorry. All we need is about four point five million dollars.
Okay.
Four point five dollars.
How much was it, Steve?
About four point five million.
Four point five.
At the end of.
At the end of fourteen.
Twenty fourteen.
Right. We used one point seven so we can do the arithmetic.
Well, no, that would be net of the one point seven taken out.
Okay, okay. Follow my math here for a second. At some point in time, there's one or two things that are going to have to happen. And please, if I'm wrong, I want somebody to correct me on this. If we keep on spending, at some point in time, we're going to have to do one or two things, raise taxes or raise fees. Am I wrong on that, Steve?
Well, we have to do some combination of increasing your revenue or, and or decreasing your expenditures or some.
Correct. And the only thing that I'm asking for, from the board and from our department head, is just show us where we are going to be before we start spending this money and then figure out how to pay for it later on. That's all this is. Again, I'm not opposed to, to spending money to make sure, to make sure your own bills are safe. Look, I know it's, when I grew up, it was, it was freeze tag, and was playing with matchbox cars in the dirt and everything like that. And times have changed. I get it. But the amount of money that, the burdens of the taxpayer weight now, with, with local jobs being cut, you have seventeen, seventeen hundreds out of Delaware, you have the place down in Northeast. You know, we have to be extremely cautious of what we do and how we spend our money. And the last thing I want to do on top of that is to rent out other places, if that's what reforms are going to be, rent out outlets and compete with other places. So I know it's, it's the small, small elephant in the room. I would definitely acknowledge that. And one thing I can say is I'm extremely happy that everybody's here. Good, bad, you don't like it, do like it, right in the middle, don't care. This is what it's all about. You get to dictate as a society, as a town, which direction you want to go, if you want to raise taxes and do this or not, certainly in case need. But I know, obviously, a lot of people want to talk, so I'm going to yield my time to the people I serve.
Sure, Tom, man. We could add in there, we can take a loan out without raising taxes. Okay. I heard the options.
We have to wait for the payment.
I'm saying, but there's, that's not completely hollow. I mean, I know we're talking around everything, but if it comes down to it, if it's a need, it's almost like the water sewer plant. Whether we want it or not, we had to get it. It was, it was thrown on us. We made it work, right?
Right.
Okay. So if it's a need, we're going to make it work someday as well, I'm telling you.
I just want to say, DJ, for in the past, I, it was, I believe for something else, but I did a study through other municipalities across the United States and of course, Maryland. And the suggested money in your rainy day fund at the time was fifteen percent.
Right.
Is what should always be in your rainy day fund.
Yep.
So we are beyond that. So, but there's something to go by what other municipalities.
Absolutely agree with you. And I checked out Hartford County. Hartford County has actually a lot of rec centers. But the municipalities don't pay for them. It's the county that actually built the buildings and that run everything. And one in Hadley Grayson, one in, I almost say it's Paulston. They were both, each, each of them were thirteen million dollars. Now, I know that the, the mayor has already said that he's not wanting to build Taj Mahal. And I, I do agree that at some point, we have some extra money. The problem is that we keep using that money year after year after year to, to pay for the bills. So at some point in time, and, and where is that intersecting line of where we run out of savings, where the threshold of fifteen percent, we start to go below that. And then we have to have some major, major talks. I'm trying to just get in front of that, making sure that we do not go below that fifteen percent threshold. But I absolutely agree that there's some stuff there. But we keep spending every year. We keep taking some over from the savings account to pay for that. So where is that intersecting line? Without having the proper information upfront on this, we can't figure it out. So we're just kicking the can further down the road on that. I don't, I just don't like it. I'm extremely uncomfortable with it.
And I thought the premise of the recreational center was to provide programs and opportunity for the, for the local kids. I don't think the issue of renting out was, was a concern because I certainly can build something and have an expectation of who's going to rent it, who's not, because you don't know where the income's coming from.
Well, you can, you can, you can set up a business model that you might have a, it's like a restaurant. Okay, certain days, you're going to have a certain percentage of people Certain days, you're going to have a certain percentage of people not going to, to be there, and you're not going to be able to get that revenue back, no matter if you have every other night full, that particular night, you don't, you don't have the revenue that you should have had. So there is, there are formulas out there that we can figure this stuff out, it, it's not, it's not that hard. And, and, and again, if we're, if we're in a deficit right now, and then we start adding more employees, then where are we? Um, that's, that's, um, that, that's, that's the million dollar question for me.
I think, uh, I guess I'll throw my couple pennies in there at this point. If, if we, uh, you know, we always say, if you continue to do things the same way, you're going to get the same results. And, uh, what we're trying to do, or what I'd like to see, is some change. I, I want to see an opportunity to, uh, uh, something different, and, and I, I agree a hundred percent with the fiscal responsibility of this. But I also know there's a value on, on our young kids' lives, that by not having this in the direction this community is going, and has been going, I don't think that there's a value that you could put on that.
I agree.
I, I just don't think there's a value, and I think that Chief said it best the other day, I'm going to skip your line, if you don't have recrea, if you don't want to put them in a community center, you're going to be putting them into a detention center. So either you build a, a community center or detention center. There's a value that we have to really consider, and that's the, that's the X factor, my dear.
What you're doing with work.
It's, it's the X factor, and, uh, good, bad, or indifferent, I think when it comes down to it, that's the factor I'm looking at, that I'm going to look like, at, as an individual.
Oh, you're right, and, and I think they also said, do you want your child to play basketball in a rec center now, or play basketball in jail later? Um, and, you know, where basketball, soccer, whatever.
And, and I'm not saying that this is going to be the answer, but if we don't, and I know it's, it could be an expensive, uh, uh, chance that we're taking here, but I think once we get all the details in, in, in hand, and, uh...
We're past it, we're past it, as far as the details in hand, that, that's the frightening part for me, because it's already been stated, we're moving forward. And what I hear when somebody says, we're moving forward, come hell or high water, we're going, we're going with this. And then the problem with that is that we have not investigated this enough. Um, and, and, you know, I remember the conversations, uh, a year ago before the budget, that there were, there were talks saying that, you know, we, we have, uh, um, oh man, what's the word? I'm, I'm looking for a, a house appraisal, so, um...
Assessments.
Assessments, thank you. Uh, assessments and assessments should go up, and, you know, we have this going on and this going on.
They did.
They didn't. They actually, they, at best, we're going to be flat, but everybody at the state and, and counties telling me that, that we're, we're below that, so that means we have less money to work with. Um, it, it just, again, it's a recipe for disaster, I, I've seen private entities already go under because they didn't have the support, so the only thing we can do is, is, again, government supporting these things, I absolutely hate it. Um, I, I just, and I do agree, I absolutely agree, I was one of those kids in Aberdeen at the old high school with Parks and Rec, and, and look, it, it saved me a, a lot of times off of, uh, uh, out of, uh, Inca Street in, in the middle of the night, so I, I get it, but we need to be more comprehensive with the money than what we are right now.
Very good, I think. Well, listen, I'm going to open up the floor to the, uh, friends of our community. Mr. Harry, you're first on the list, and you wanted to talk about, uh, DPW, I believe.
Yes, I, uh, got a couple compliments. Uh, I came into town, I remember now, it's Friday night, it's like a bad night, and Diane said, you can't go in town, you know, it's not all, it's not all, it's like two people. I said, I can see if my sidewalk can be shot, that's great. I came into town, went back to tell Diane, I said, you don't believe this, they got all the streets and, up and clean, except for the car department. And then I thought about, that doesn't surprise me, because you know the leadership, this board here, and then with Dan over there, that didn't surprise me a bit, he makes things happen, I gotta tell you the story about it. One day I went down to him and told him I needed some help on that, and I, I had to see him in the parking lot there, public works. He, uh, and then I turned around and go back to where the problem was, and he beat me there, I don't know how he did it, must have been speeding. But he beat me there, that's how effective they are, I tell you. So I, I just want to make a comment about the snow. The, uh, well, you made a right decision on Fourth of July, that was a, that was a great one. That's the only day you can have it. Another good example of leadership in this town, this, this board here, and this people here, is that Colonel over there, and the kind, I know to her, and I know his brother, and I know his parents, and you guys are great people, he's the leader, he's the one that makes things happen, and I, I appreciate that. Parks and Rec. DJ, you're not going to believe this, when I was fifteen years old, that's a long time ago, in southern Indiana, we had the beautiful gymnasium, Parks and Rec, I guess whoever, Friday, Saturday, play basketball, of course, everybody in Indiana played basketball. When I was fifteen, I'm not fifteen anymore, that's a long time ago. And the, I, I never heard anything about wrong with building a Parks and Rec, that's for kids. We got to find out how to get it paid for, that's not kids' problem, that's our problem. And, you know, leadership in this, this town, those towns are diamond and rut. And we don't have a Parks and Rec, that's the rut part of Elton. Here's a town set between Philadelphia and Washington DC, or New York City and Baltimore, and we don't even have a Parks and Rec. Shame on us. We need to quick this victory and find out how to do it, and I agree with you, it's going to cost money. But your examples you're using are not good, and Zebby, about Aberdeen, that's a good example, when you went there and played in Parks and Rec. Try to play here in Elton.
The one in Aberdeen doesn't exist, or is that something?
I, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm just saying what you, that goes. But this Parks and Rec thing is extremely important in this town, extremely important to kids, and I applaud, uh, Commissioner, uh, Niner and Givens, whatever involves that, appreciate the, the mayor's leadership, but Mayor, you know, we got a new mayor now, we want things done. We've looked a long time at getting anything done, now it's time to get things done, got to figure it out. There are ways to get it done, there's state money, there's federal money, and everybody in Maryland, going to Hartford County, I spent a lot of time in Hartford County, they got Parks and Rec over in that corner. So anyway, that's all, that's all I wanted to bring up about it. It's not the money, it's the kids.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Ann Marie Bueller, come on down. Blowing Woodardville and Main Street, there may be more.
Yes, thanks, thank you.
And please give your address, I don't have it.
I'm in Colonial Ridge, I'm on one thirteen St. Louis Drive, in Town Limits.
Thank you.
And I also work in Town Limits. Um, I did want to say that the police department, they are doing a wonderful job, and I do follow on Facebook, and I enjoy seeing they're looking for this criminal, that criminal, and they found, and, um, I think it's a great, a lot of different municipalities are using Facebook for people to, you know, help out the community and help them doing that. And I used to enjoy when Matt used to walk around, oh, excuse me, Chief, I would, he used to walk around and say hi, so I don't get this phone, I don't get to see him that often now, like he used to do. I used to see him a lot before. Anyway, snow plowing, um, they did a wonderful job. But, my question is, all you hear is Main Street, Main Street, Main Street, what about the other places of business that aren't on Main Street? What about the hospital? What about Bow Street and North Street? I now work in healthcare. Um, we drove around Sunday night, until I got out of the house Sunday night, and I wanted to see where I was going to be able to drive, if I was going to be able to drive, if I needed a ride or whatever, and nothing around here was clear. So, when I went to work, as a matter of fact, that evening, I messaged my coworkers to say, you know, get in early, because there's no parking around. We even drove into the municipal parking lot, which is down here, that was half plowed, which I understand we had a lot of snow.
And this was on a sunny?
Yes, this was sunny evening, Monday and Tuesday. Bow Street wasn't clear and everything, I parked over at the hospital, in the, inside, you know, the park in the hospital. But, prior to the streets being clean, can you tell me why Meadow Park was plowed? I drive by Meadow Park every single day, and I go to work, I drive through there, coming from Colonial Ridge, down the hill.
And what day was Meadow Park plowed?
Meadow Park was plowed, uh, Monday, I believe it was, and I went to it Monday and Tuesday, that's plowed, and then you see an article in the paper from someone from Hollinsworth Manor, that they're not plowed, and you know, Meadow Park's plowed. So what gives precedence of Meadow Park, and for our patients to try to park, and they can't come in, and they have little children trying to come in, they're like, there's no parking, what are we supposed to do? They're coming in, double parking in our parking lot, and our parking lot was plowed, unfortunately, we have a small parking lot, what are we supposed to do? So they were bringing their children in, we were watching their children, and then they were leaving, but Meadow Park was plowed.
Well, you had, you actually had some great comments, uh, the, just to go to Main Street real quickly, it is a snow emergency route, very important, and that's required of us from the state to have that done. And I believe the same thing with North Street, uh, has to be done from a snow, still emergency route with the state. The other areas that you were saying that's, uh, being the private property of the hospital, unless you're talking about in the parking areas on High Street and on Bow, we should probably take care of them as best we can, to nip through there, but the parking lots themselves would have belonged to the healthcare industry or to the hospital to take care of that issue. I have no idea why we would have plowed Meadow Park, other than to make a trip around there during, uh, part of the venue, and I can refer to Dan on that, maybe for the walkers, I don't know, I can't...
Also, on Tuesday, what happens is, we, we typically will attack Main Street first, and we'll attack North Street, then we will get to Bow, while all these fire cones in the back goes, we're going to dig areas, we take smaller trucks out there, we try to open up areas, you know, like around Button Woods, Jhar, and then we'll do one loop around Meadow Park, see what the thought was, so. It was on Tuesday, it was an hour to a mess of a walk.
Well, I said, you couldn't even park on either side of Bow, I'm a little confused where we are right now, either side of Bow Street, it was basically one lane through. So you do have a lot of hospital workers, and I work for a private company, so I was concerned as to why these people are in that Hollinsworth Manor, plus also, our patients can't park anywhere around Elton, so we got a lot of complaints from our patient, well, their parents, because our patients are, you know, children.
And the, the challenging thing that we had at Hollinsworth Manor was that, uh, they have a, if, if you've been down to any of the, we were able to take care of Row A, B, and C, uh, but the, the Row one through thirteen, you have a car parked on each side, they're very narrow, there was so much snow that we couldn't even push the snow without having a possibility of damaging the cars. So that was the challenging part, so when he was reading the letter to the editor, Mr. Smith had called me, not called me, uh, a social media, uh, message at me multiple times about, uh, cleaning out the, the certain areas, but, uh, when he was the homework works director, he also had the same issue that we had now, it's just that, it, it was, it's a, an impossible situation. We're going to look at that, we're going to address it, uh, maybe with some snow blowers or privatize, I bet the privatizing was some contractors to handle it, Hollinsworth Manor and/or Button Woods, uh, where we just have too many trucks to handle it.
Well, I don't even, I've never even been in Hollinsworth Manor, I mean, I do have some people I know that live there, but I've never been there, so I don't know what their street's situation is, but I, because I was concerned for our patients, and if they say, at least in Main Street, when we did go down Main Street Sunday night, Main Street was a mess, because there were so many cars parked on Main Street too. So I, I know that was difficult for all the rec parks or DPW, or whoever they were, the snowplow guys, to do their job, but like I said, I, my concern was about the park, but like you said, they just went through it and whatever. Um, next thing, Wooderville shut off notices. We personally got a Wooderville shut off notice with our neighbors and everybody else, with two town guys all around, giving the whole neighborhood these shut off notices.
To your neighborhood on St. Louis?
Absolutely, and we've never, ever not paid our Woodardville, and it was like, um, my fiance asked me, what did you do with the Woodardville, where's the Woodardville? I have to make the bill, how did I get the shut off notice? And I'm like, I didn't get a bill, you know? So it was a little heated, I mean, when you get, it was a little heated, like, what did I do with the bill? And then come to find out, I read an article in the paper, that it was erroneous, sent out, uh, always, but you, you paid, but my thing is, like you told about spending, wasting money, so how many, uh, town workers had to go out and go door to door and put all these tags on our neighbors, and didn't someone pick it up, that why are all these people getting shut off notices? So how much extra did that money cost the town to give these erroneous charges to?
On, on the local, did we have an issue with around St. Louis Drive?
We all here, yeah.
Oh, yes, one thirteen St. Louis Drive, we got a shut off, our neighbors got a shut off, two gentlemen were going each side of the street, putting tags on our street.
Uh, that's, that's the first that I've heard of it, and, and we will look into it, I can promise you that. Uh, I, I had no idea about St. Louis Drive, we had, and, and I think if you, uh, could read a little bit between the lines, we've been without a key person in our finance department now for, since, uh, the third week of November, uh, she will, she actually said to me over the weekend, she could be back in less than two weeks, but in the meantime, we're actually hiring an additional person for the finance department, that's no excuse to the public. But I will tell you, we've been down to two people doing the jobs of four people, and I think they've been doing the best that they can. Uh, we did have a neighborhood, I will tell you, that I knew about, that we, uh, uh, sent a bill, or we didn't send the bill out, uh, normally, what we do is if you get the bill, you will get a second bill. So you're saying that you didn't get the first bill or the second bill, knowing that was a shut off?
We got a shut off notice, yeah. Bob went immediately out and went right there and paid it, and then Mike went, I had to pay the Woodardville, what did you do with the Woodardville, I got a shut off notice, well, no.
I will have that answered for you for the next meeting, or we'll send you a note on that.
And the other, I have one other question on the Woodardville, how come, um, there's, when you open it up, there's no more, and another friend of ours asked us about it too, we've discussed this a couple times, why are there no more, um, breakdowns?
The rates?
Yes.
Uh, I think what we did is we opened it...
We stayed money by not having those reprint on the bills, because when the rates change, we have to print bills and generate bills that haven't been due, so the rates are available on our websites.
And, and it does give us an ability to, put a message, put a message on the bill.
Okay, oh.
I'm sorry, doesn't it say on, on the bill to go to the website?
I'll have to look when I go back home.
But the, the rates are available.
Because I used to like to go through and say, okay, we're in town, and how many gallons we spent, and this and that, because we have, uh, during the summer, we have a pool, so we like to see, you know, when we filled it or topped it off or whatever, and to see where we use so much different water and everything, so now, we just can't break it down, but I'll look online and look at that. So, and, um, I, I love living in Elton, I love my job, I love working in Elton, um, everybody said, you see, you know, New, North Street, or not North Street, I'm sorry, Main Street, you got the new pizza shop, you got the old new shop. There is a business that I see next to the pizza shop?
Cross the street.
Next door to the pizza shop, is there a store or something opening?
Cross the street.
No, 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 no. There's a new store across the street from the pizza shop, and you have a pizza shop, and you have another building right there, it's, it's decorated for every holiday.
But our design committee at the Elton Alliance decorates windows for people.
Oh, okay, because it just seemed like a vacant place, and I was wondering what that was, if it was a new building, or something going to open, because it had Halloween, it had Christmas, now it has Valentine's, and I was wondering what that building was.
Vacant.
Excuse me?
Vacant, then I'm going to work over there.
Well, that's all. Thank you.
I just want to ask you a question from the comments you made about plowing out Meadow Park. I can't pass, and I'm sorry, the road was plowed, but just, um, not throwing this on you, Dan, but is it possible that with the storm, that we got hit with one of the biggest storms we ever had, we could use that space out there for designated, uh, snow, temporarily dump it, so we can clear the roads and make it a lot easier? I thought that's what that was, the road was, is it possible that could happen?
That's not an issue.
Okay, I'm just, from what she's saying, that it seems like a nice area to drop some snow and clear those streets off, and have it ready, instead of driving it someplace and no place to put it.
It goes nearby, but not, not there.
Okay, but I mean, that looks like a good spot, temporarily, if it's a bad snow.
We'll get, we'll park, we, we've got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, hey, Steve, can you, can you let us know if it was the same time as the other communities, when they got their shut off?
We'll get you closer.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Bob Gorman. I'm assuming 113 St. Louis Drive. Come on down.
She lives in the nice part of there, but not. I just had some concerns about town finances in general. And one thing that I had heard months ago, just kind of mentioned in passing, I heard the words, which actually made me look him up, Lou, who's not here tonight, had mentioned it, and then we never heard any more. And it concerned me, especially since we're talking about building a building now. And it was, the phrase that he used was inflow and infiltration. And so I didn't really, he described it a little bit to us, and I went online and looked it up more. His concern was that, that we've got some sort of places where rainwater is getting into our sewage system. And that sounds concerning to me. I know it was about 10 years ago now, maybe, Mary Jo, that you, we had the sewage plant upgraded, and we were supposed to have a lot of capacity to grow with it. But if we've got a lot of excess rainwater going into that sewage, into the sewage plant, you know, we're paying to process water that shouldn't be there. And I hadn't heard any more about, about that. So I was concerned that there might be some other giant expenditure lurking out there. You know, that goes, goes back to, you know, where are we going to set our priorities? You know, we're talking about a building which is a great idea, but we have to take care of things like clean water and sewage first, because that's a public health issue.
That would come from the water sewer fund, wouldn't it? That's a separate fund.
Yeah, but you know what, three of my neighbors I said goodbye to in the last two years, because they lost their houses in foreclosure. It really doesn't matter whether you're, whether they can't pay their water bill, or their sewage, or their tax bill. You know, there's only so much money in a household to go around. And whether, no matter which one we raise, you know, there's, there's people that are, that are having trouble making ends meet. You know, and so that's, that's a concern. I mean, you know, there are some people that can afford to double their taxes. There's a lot of people in town that are just barely making it. You know, I know in one of the cases, one of the families didn't have water for months before they moved out. We found out after they moved out that, you know, that was something that was shut off, they couldn't afford. And, and so we certainly want to watch as prices creep up, you know? A lot of people in this room have good jobs, not everybody does. And so, you know, I'm concerned for my fellow citizens as we see things creep up and creep up, that we don't leave people behind. And that was really, my biggest thing was that, you know, I hadn't heard any more about that, so I don't know if that's something that's happening behind the scenes, or, you know, or it's just not happening.
Currently, our, our capacity at the plant is 3.2 million gallons a day of sewer, and we're at 1.9 million gallons. So we've got an extreme amount of capacity of sewer that'll last us hopefully into the next 20 years, without having to plug the additional ring on, which could take us to a 5 million gallon a day plant. Now, if we build out all the houses in the town of Elton, there's probably over 5,000 homes on the books that have been approved, that if we were to build completely out there, we're out of sewer capacity. I agree 100%. It's been a, an issue where we have, if you go into, if we could ever get into a water audit, and if Sidney was here, he'd probably, Sidney's our guy that is really entrenched in the storm water management side of things. What we find is there's a lot of homes that were, I will tell you, there's a, there's a lot of homes in the town of Elton that have their storm water management of their basement flooding water going into the sewer system. That's where the issue is. And until we get our residents of our town to disconnect that system and do a different way, we're always going to have storm water into the sewer system. But other than that, that's the major ones that I know, it's our residents. Our residents are actually in violation more so than anything. And it probably was okay to do it when the houses were built, ex amount of years ago. But the state is really putting a requirement on us to really knock that out.
Right.
So we are looking into that.
Years ago, yeah, Mary Jo had told me how, we built the plant with lots of excess capacity.
There's plenty of capacity, but if we're treating storm water, that's why your bill is higher.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up we have, is it Mylin Matthews? Come on down.
Hi, guys, George.
Doing great, and your address, please?
141 East Village Road.
Okay, thank you.
I was actually coming up to just speak on the recreation center. The reason why, well, I really do think that it's very important, and I'm only saying this because I've been here for 35 years. Not that I'm so old, my age. But I have two young males, I have two, two sons, and I have lots of cousins and, you know, friends in the area, whatever. I'm very involved in all the kids' sports. And I want to say thank you for you guys getting involved in, you know, the Elton, I mean, Elton High School football, during football season, because it did make a big difference, you know, you guys having the kids come down to, men and hands, and having dinner with kids and everything. But one thing I am going to say is that a lot of this crime and stuff is happening on these streets, because there's nowhere for these kids to go, period. And this is an escape for some of our kids, because sometimes when they get at home, they have no one to talk to. They have, you know, half these parents are on drugs. And this is a place for them to go, a safe haven for the kids. A lot of the center cities, you know, my dad grew up in Wilmington. There is, you know, recreation places for the kids to go, to get out of their, you know, maybe abusive homes, or, you know, homes that have a lot of drugs in it, whatever. I am going to say thank you to your officers, especially Officer Conley and Officer Tor. Officer Tor was amazing, like, like, my son went to the Boys, Boys and Girls Club, I'm sorry, I want to speak in front of people, sorry. But he made a big difference in these kids' lives. You know, a lot of people, a lot of kids are scared of the police officers. You know, even if it is, you know, people coming in and donating their time, or whatever they can do. Because I know, you know, as a community, we all come together, it will work. But the whole thing is like, I'm sorry, I don't know what your name is, sir. But when you said, you know, there is not a price that our kids have. You know, and I'm going to tell you right now, my kids are, you know, their lives are priceless to me. And the whole thing is if we come together as a community, as a whole, and, you know, figure out what we can do as a community to support these kids, give them a place that they can play, whatever. A lot of these kids like to play, you know, football, basketball, soccer, whatever. And that might be their outlet to situations that they might be having at home. So I'm, I'm all for it, I don't care where this money comes from. Money has to come from somewhere. I mean, you know, there, I mean, I'm pretty sure we spend on things that we sometimes don't need. And, you know, if we can put it back into the community for the kids, so they can get off the streets, so that, you know, we don't have kids that are overdosing and dying on drugs. Or, you know, these people, you know, going, well, these kids, feeling like the only thing to do is to go to the streets. You know, I don't know. I'm not a speaker, like I said, but, you know, I am for the recreation center, these kids, to give them something to do with their time and energy.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for sharing.
Okay, I have someone else on the list, does anyone? Mr. Litzberg, come on down.
I'll just burn one of the black walls away in Elton. I don't think anybody has, you know that a community center is going to be built. And most of the questions are, how are you going to pay for it? The true 13-year budget is $390,530. It had an income of $154,100. That's a deficit of $236,000. 2014 budget increased $411,555. Income $148,100. Deficit of $263,455. That's a half a million dollars in deficit in two years with the Parks and Rec. Now Earl's talking about borrowing money from the savings account and repaying it. How are you going to repay it when you're a half a million dollars in two years and a deficit? How's it going to be repaid? You're not even taking into account the cost to operate the building, which you probably know when you get things back from your builders, because they can tell you that. But how much is it going to cost, or how many more people is it going to take to run this building? That's all anybody wants to know, I think that's what DJ wants to know. And I think all of you want to know that, too.
We do want to know.
We're not getting any answers when you ask these questions.
No, I can promise you we'll have that. I can absolutely, I think we need to, as we start to move, we know that it's not going to be, I can tell you, I know it's not going to be a break even.
It's not going to be self-supporting, can't be.
It will not be.
Can't be.
There's, it's, it's not going to happen to be a self-supporting entity. But I can, but I can tell you that we will have those numbers to show everything.
Okay, well, if you're borrowing from your savings account, if it's not going to be a self-supporting house, it's going to be paid for. That's my, that's my question, that's all. Because we talked about that, we're in, we're talking about programs that didn't make any money, and they should have been stopped. That's all, just wanted to know how it's going to be paid for.
And I did say at the end, that was another suggestion, I didn't say we're going to borrow. I just said, as a suggestion, to add that in as part of it.
Okay, that's a suggestion.
Okay, so.
Well, I think, I think it's, if Badgers back and forth every single week with the same thing, and we're not getting any answers, I ask you, actually, how is it going to be paid?
It was time to get those numbers together, sweetie. You keep asking for something that is not here for us yet.
And we know it's not here, but when you're losing a half a million dollars in two years, you ought to have some kind of an idea.
Bring your voice down, I can hear you.
Can I just say something, please, Mr. Litzberg? I think when we started talking about this seriously a couple of weeks ago, people didn't realize, Parks and Rec were out of their building for almost three weeks, I think they just were put back in. So they were juggling using like phones, their cell phones here, and because of maintenance that had to be done. So I know, I have talked to Mary, the Parks and Rec director, and she is putting together that performer that the mayor had requested, but it's just taking a little longer because of the incidents that took place.
Well, I'm talking about the last two budgets, 13 and 14, that's not your budget, we're talking about budgets in the past. A half a million dollars, a lot of money to be made up. I'm on a fixed income, I don't want to be paying any more taxes. We're supposed to get a discount or a 12% reduction in our water rates, that didn't work out either, did it, Rob? Not the 12%.
I think you got the 12%.
I didn't get the 12%. Unless my math is wrong.
12% of just the water fund, I didn't, not the whole bill. Thank you. Anyone else, yes, Ms. Ally Cole, come on down, and your address, please?
407 R. Bates Mall Road. I just wanted to address the board and kind of give Mr. Van Ryn a little bit of an insight with the Parks and Rec. For those of you who don't know me, I know most of you do, my name is Ally, and I do attend Tri-State Christian Academy. I have been very fortunate to grow up in an upbringing where my parents, I could play sports, I could, I didn't, it was all given to me, and I'm very grateful for it. But this year for my business class, my math teacher asked us to come up with a social impact project. After seeing the Boys and Girls Club close, four of my very close friends came up with an idea called Fostering Further, that we have presented to a competition in University of Delaware, where we found out today we have made the top 50 in the United States, and are hopefully going to make the top 10. What brought us to this is we found some horrifying statistics that really relate to this community, which are 25% of kids who aren't active in their communities and don't have places like the Parks and Rec to go to. 25% of them end up in jail, out of their houses, and are left on the streets. Now, when you don't have young kids who are at local in their communities, who are finding things to keep them busy, to keep them creative, to keep their minds exploring, this is what we're left with. I want to encourage everyone to vote on this, because I am a young person who sees change in the town of Elton, who sees things like this that need to happen, because I know that even though I might not use these programs, they impact me, because I am so part of this community, and as a young person, I would like to see this change, and I would like to be a part of it in any way that's possible. And I think if you can see that there's four high school students who have no relationship to the town of Elton, or the Parks, or Recreation, or anything, that want to make a change in this town and in this community, I'm hoping that you'll see that you have our support, you have the young people's support. And I think all the youth are just asking you to stand up behind us and to make this change, so we can keep kids active in their community, keep them active in what they love to do. And if you do that, then it's going to explode in many different areas, as far as education, and learning, and jobs, and growth. It just, it just blossoms in so many different ways. So all I'm asking is just your consideration, and that you really think, and, I mean, just by what the board does, by showing up to these basketball games and engaging with these kids, I mean, it's done so much for me, because I've been lucky to grow up in this town with these wonderful, amazing people, and they've impacted my life. And I'm just, I'm really asking for your support, and that you would just really think hard about this, and realize that it does need to happen.
Thank you.
Can I say something real quick? That was awesome.
You want my job, don't you?
No, I think that was, that was fantastic, and I couldn't agree more. You know, and I had the public education, I didn't have the private education. So, and I grew up on the wrong side of the tracks. And, and God is trouble, and now here I am, good or bad, here I am. My biggest concern, and it's been said a couple of times, about the lives of our young children. My question to everybody is, one is one life more important than another life? And what I mean by that is, people that are on fixed incomes, when we're going to have to raise water rates, when we're going to have to raise taxes, and then they're, they're looking at their medications, they're looking at this, where, where is that balance? And that's all I'm looking for, is that balance of saying, hey, instead of somebody suggesting a loan or tax carry's money, why aren't we out investigating the private sector a little bit more? Why aren't we looking at bereavements? Why aren't we looking at these other avenues that can help this project? I am for this project. This all started with me, because of the thing that was laid on my desk where it was said that it was being funded by town funds only. All right, so that, that got me looking and drilling down into all the numbers. I love exactly what you said, good luck to you. All right, and you run mayor shortly?
Well, I just want to leave you with one, two things, one, number one. The reason, I think of it in this analogy, and I think this is what has put it into perspective for a lot of people. And I know, I don't, I don't remember what your name is, but you kind of put it out there. And I'm not a parent, but I know with what the sacrifice my parents have made, when you become a parent, sometimes you have to make sacrifices for your kids. And as a town, sometimes we have to make sacrifices, because it's going to go to the greater good, and you're going to see improvement, and you're going to see good come out of it. And I know that you, like I said, I can't answer those questions that you've asked. But I think if, if you can just see that there's four high schoolers that the, our, my, our top prize, I get $50,000 to go towards my education, and we've already signed the waiver that it's not going to go to our education, it would go into putting in a fund, just start something, if this, something like the Parks and Rec wasn't to go through, because us four high schoolers would much rather put $50,000 of what we have to see something grow and see something happen, than to put it into ourselves. And I think that's kind of what I would like to see the board do, is to make, you know, sometimes you have to make a sacrifice, and it might hurt a little, but you, that, you're going to get a greater good out of that.
That depends on who's going to hurt, and, you know, you just brought, you brought up a fantastic idea as far as the private funding. I mean, if there's a, you know, a town startup.
I mean, our business, our business plan is, it would be a nonprofit organization that you would get, I mean, that's one thing.
Personal kitty, something like that.
If you can have four young minds come up with this, I would expect that five very intelligent people could get together and make.